All right, let's call this meeting to order.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, March 16th, 2016 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, I ask, as we move into this moment of silent meditation, that we remember those who are less fortunate than we are in any and every way in our community locally as well as globally. Also ask that we remember those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. We ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the necessary and proper information so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the city council meeting of March 2nd, 2016, and bills for payment on March 11th, 25th, and April 1st, 2016. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky.
At this time, we have a few citizens we'd like to recognize. At first, I'd like to call up the team Erie Hard Chrome Rack and Roll 10-Man Modified Softball Team. Up to the stage, please. We want to recognize you for being inducted into the Amateur Association of the Pennsylvania Hall of Fame for the 2016 year. These men here played for Erie Hard Chrome Rack and Roll, and they started playing in the Class C League in 1979 in this city recreational modified league, advancing to the major softball, competing in tournaments across the state. And by 1993, they won five consecutive state titles, including a 28-game win streak, and went on to win another four consecutive PA state titles from 1998 through 2001, including three national titles. So they were selected as the dynasty of the best of the century by the Erie Times News in 2000. And after playing for 23 years under the Amateur Softball Association, the team won over 60 invitational tournaments, nine state titles, three national titles, and eventually retired after the 2001 season. The championship team reunited in September 2013 for the last time to play in the Make-A-Wish Charity Tournament. So be it resolved by the city council of the city of Erie that this commendation is hereby presented to Erie Hard Chrome Rack and Roll upon being inducted as the first 10-man modified team ever into the PAA Amateur Softball Association Hall of Fame. Erie City Council extends a huge hometown congratulations and best wishes for all future personal and professional endeavors. Mr. Rocker, would you like to come up and say a few words on behalf of your team?
I would certainly love to do that. We're privileged that the city council would take time out in their busy schedule to honor us in this way. We never thought that this could come to be just a bunch of young kids just playing ball, but it proves, even with the city, your dreams can come true. Keep the course, keep the faith, and move forward, but you must work together. You must work together as a team. That's the only way. So, thank you, everybody, and again, it's on behalf of my ballplayers, it's quite an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. and the Sisters of St. Joseph for recognition. Sisters, we thank you for coming here today. On behalf of all of city council, we'd like to recognize you as the Women Religious of Erie during National Catholic Sisters Week. And the Benedictine Sisters, from your origins in Germany to coming to Erie in 1869 to open St. Benedict's Academy, and for your work today at the Inner City Art House, on May a Soup Kitchen, St. Benedict's Center, and Bennettwood Apartments in the community, we'd like to recognize you. Sisters of St. Joseph, from your origins in 17th-century France to the United States in 1836 and in Erie in 1860, opening Villa Maria Academy, St. Vincent Hospital, Villa College. St. Joseph's also ministered at St. Joseph's Orphanage in Erie, and their work continues today at St. Patrick's Haven, Erie Dawn, Catholic Rural Ministry, and the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network. And the Sisters of Mercy, from their origins in Ireland and coming to Erie in 1917 to teach at Holy Family School, my alma mater, and in 1926, opening Mercier's Seminary, which later became Mercier's Prep, and Mercier's College, now Mercier's University. The Sisters of Mercy continue to work in our community through the House of Prayer, House of Mercy, Mercy Center for the Arts, and Mercy Terrace Apartments. Therefore, be it resolved by the city of Erie that we honor and thank the active and retired Catholic Sisters of Erie and extend our heartfelt thanks and appreciation for enriching the lives of others in our community through their selfless acts of compassion and generosity during National Catholic Sisters Week. And on a personal note, our city would not be the city that it is without the work of the sisters and your predecessors. So many leaders in this community were educated by you and educated at the institutions that you founded, and so many youth today are touched and adults are touched by the ministries that you have in connecting people with their basic needs and connecting them with their spiritual needs. This city is in debt to you for your work in this community, and we wanted to thank you today for all that you do. So, sisters, on behalf of city council, let's give these sisters a round of applause. Request for repository sales. Do we have any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales? Seeing none, citizens to be heard. Our first citizen to sign up today was Mr. Randy Barnes.
Good evening, council, guests, administration. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point. My topic tonight is $81,732 contract, employees, friends, and family. It's nice to see the youth here, and what reminds me that everything said tonight and has been for quite a few years is going to be preserved forever. When we take votes in here, those votes the city council people take are preserved forever, and I think politicians have every right to defend those votes vigorously when they're questioned on those votes. And the kind of votes I think that hurts city council and hurt the taxpayers are votes when we vote on things to spend money when it's not needed. Right now, I think we're into the 18th or 19th month of a 24-month contract of $2,000 a month, I'm sorry, yeah, $2,000 a month? $1,000 a month to pay retired city clerk to come back and train the current city clerk. I can tell you, in the 42 years I've been in business, the way it's done in business is the person that leaves trains the new person coming in unless there's a sudden death or accident. And we know that wasn't the case here. Mr. Clem worked for 47 years here, and he knew well in advance he was going to retire. The city council people should have insisted on training take place to someone in the office, because the day that Mr. Clem walked out, he walked out with his earned pension of $69,000, but he walked out with a $12,000-year contract to come back and train the new city clerk. And that vote was taken 2014 of July. It was, a motion was made by Councilman Witherspoon and seconded by Councilman Winarski. They voted yes, of course, and so did Councilman Jones, and a council person is no longer here. Those four people decided that to reward this man that never trained the incoming city clerk, the reward would be give him $1,000 a month for two years. Now, for you younger people out here, city council people, they get paid, what is it, $600 a month? Is it something like that? So they decided to pay this man to come back and train the new city clerk more than what they get paid to come to every meeting, and they come to two meetings a month and a lot of steady sessions and a lot of civic activities they have to do. But for some reason, in the city of Erie, we seem to have so much extra money, and we don't know what to do with it because there are no problems out there. So let's give a retired man $1,000 a month to come back and do what he should have done the day before he left this job of 247 years. See, that's part of the reason we're in the hole we're in in Erie. It's not these young people and the generation before them, the generation before them that made these decisions. It's elected officials that make these kind of decisions, and that's okay. You can reward your friends, your family, anybody you want, you can reward, but stand up and defend that vote. Tell us what this man's done to deserve that money and how he saved the citizens and taxpayers of Erie money. Because we spent it, three of you decided to spend it. We ought to have some return, shouldn't we? What was the return? I don't think there was a return. We know that he did call Prilo Enterprises and tell them to come up and pick the microfiche up, preserve the records. That must have taken two to three minutes to call Prilo Enterprises, preserve the records. And then, that's right, he did give you legal advice over what the solicitor, you have a solicitor who said you have to vote for the contract, you have to have a reason not to vote for the dog contract. But he was advising you, right? Because you seven people needed advice to do your job, because that was part of it, right? Preserve the records and give us advice. And we won't take the advice of the city solicitor because he's gone to law school. We want to take advice from our friend that we're paying $1,000 a month to train the new city clerk and to call Prilo Enterprises and pick up the phone and say, hey, Prilo Enterprises, come and get the microfiche, preserve the records. I could have done this before I left on my last day, but I wanted to wait for the $1,000 a month contract to call you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Our next citizen to be heard, Amy Koppetsor.
Good evening, council. 913 State Street, apartment 903. May it please the council, may this be preserved for the public record. A higher responsibility. I am here to talk about a higher level of responsibility, and considering that there is a lot of youth here today, I think this is actually a God-given report. I did not know they would be here. It is easy to point a finger at someone, some menity, some authority, some public official, and assign blame. Blame accomplishes nothing constructive. All blame does is that it soothes one's ego by evading a responsibility that they are in denial to. All blame can be used for is a force for anger, rebellion, and revenge. All of those forces are destructive, not constructive. I hope our usual attendees here at council are listening. All of us have a higher responsibility to each other, to our community at large, to our beloved city. A higher responsibility to make each other better people, our city to be the best it can be, and a higher responsibility to those we serve as the community leaders to be as effective, constructive, as positive as we can to those who follow our lead. One of these days, I would like to hold a workshop on how to talk to public officials, especially for council. I am tired of the disrespect that I see occur in these chambers. I know you're tired of this, too. Sometimes you get so unnerved to leave the room while certain inflammatory people are up at the podium. I probably would, too, if I was in your position. I don't think many people realize that you do this as a second job to help better our community. You would think people would be more appreciative that you do the jobs that no one else wants to do. We have a higher responsibility to set a higher standard. Our standards are too low as a community. Counsel, I have seen our people come to these council chambers and disrespect you as a council and your positions. You are the city's legislative body. You are Erie's local equivalent to the senate. I want to use an example all will understand. If I were a lawyer and I was in a judge's chambers, those chambers are a sacred place of respect. And if I were to disrespect a judge, even as a lawyer, in his chambers, or for that matter, in his court, I could be held in contempt. I suggest you enact something similar here at council. It is one thing as a lawyer to say a statement and then withdraw it to make an impact. However, when every sentence is inflammatory instead of constructive, you have a right to demand a certain amount of decorum or respect. If you allow people here in council chambers to disrespect you and do nothing about it, you will lose the respect of the people of Erie as a whole. I know you don't want that. I wouldn't want it here. I challenge you, counsel, to lead by example. If you can demand respect here, perhaps our entire community can be held to a higher level of responsibility and accountability towards authority figures. Let it start here, and it will then flow down to the police, public and civil servants, teachers, parents, and all other kinds of authority figures in the lives of our citizens. You can let it begin here with you. It will require a follow-through. It will require boundary setting. It will not be easy. However, nothing worth doing is ever truly easy. I have faith, especially in you, President Mersky, that you will not allow disrespect to be tolerated in these chambers ever again. We need to teach each other, leading by example, of how to respect authority. What better way to show people how to be respectful of authority, especially when city council meetings are televised? Will you help us lead by example? One of the things I'd like to submit into evidence today, and you can make copies of this later, I will need this back, is Article 705 of Disorderly Conduct. Now, disorderly conduct is defined as "it shall constitute the offense of disorderly conduct for any person to disturb the good order and quiet of the city by clamor or noise, by intoxication or drunkenness, by fighting and using obscene, profane, or indecent language on the sidewalk, streets, or in any public place or building in the city to the annoyance of its residents."
Amy, thank you for your time. We're going to have to stop you there. Time's up, but I really appreciate, thank you for coming to speak to us today. Up next, on our citizens to be heard is Abigail Merlino. Is Azana coming up with you?
No, it's separate.
Separate, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Abigail Merlino, and I reside in Fairview and attend Collegiate Academy. Tonight, I would like to address homelessness and hunger in Erie. As a student of an Erie school and a frequent volunteer at Second Harvest Food Bank, I witnessed both, sorry, both, oh, both first, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's your time. You're all right.
I witnessed homelessness and hunger firsthand, and I see how many people it affects. I would like to bring awareness to the citizens of Erie who may not witness these and may not comprehend how serious they are. Some ways to bring awareness to the community would be building a box community that students could live in just to witness what it's and actually feel the simulation of what it's like to not be able to go home at night and sleep in a comfortable bed and have warm blankets around you and change into your pajamas. And obviously, you could put up posters around the community with lots of statistics around how many people there are in the community that are hungry or how many kids are affected by this, and how many people are unemployed and therefore may be homeless. I do hang around with, I hang out with a lot of kids who may not be going home to a good family at night, and the one free breakfast and lunch they receive at school may be the only thing they eat all day. And it really makes me sad to see that people are suffering and that not much is being done to change this. And I really think that, I mean, I don't know the full effect that it has on people, but I would like to go to the city mission and speak with, sit down and speak with people who frequently go there and see what they believe needs to be changed in order to make their lives better and to make the city a better place. So, also, for Global Youth Service Day, we will be making 250 homemade sandwiches and cookies and brownies for the May soup kitchen, because people don't get homemade food who are homeless. And I think it's really important that people don't have to suffer as much anymore and they get to live a better life. Thank you.
Thank you. You did a good job. Azana Williams, next citizen to be heard.
I reside in Mill Creek and go to McDowell High School. I'd like to address the problem of violence in Erie. There are all kinds of violence, and it affects everyone. The crime rates are constantly increasing, and Erie has a crime rate 91% higher than all states and cities of various sizes. More shootings have occurred lately, and robberies in Erie occur approximately 32.32% with states' areas above average of being victim of property crime. Everyone is affected because when things happen in public places, people who aren't involved are getting hurt and killed. That's why we need to make an impact and get youth off the streets in good hands. We can create a program to do that by hiring street workers and have speakers that once been in their position to talk to them and relate to them. The environment would be nonjudgmental, so they'd feel welcome, and we would hold many fundraises to pay the street workers and call our community leaders to sponsor and help out our program. A program like Youth Leader Institute is an example where students can benefit and learn how to be good leaders and advocates and make a positive impact on the society. And also, during Global Youth Service Day, we'll be working with SafeNet on domestic violence, and we'll be providing and making hope baskets for them. And the program would eventually become a training reaction, make a difference in many people's lives, because it will make our community better and safer. If we get these kids to understand they have a meaning and purpose to life, then they won't go out and make something out of their life instead of going out and doing these senseless acts. The criminals will then drastically go down. We really need to do something about this and come and get our community. Parents can even let their kids go out without worrying. Therefore, we really need to get this problem under control so kids can actually go out without being worried they're going to be in the middle of a shooting. Parents can stop worrying. Parents can stop crying for their dead children. Someone can stop losing their brothers and sisters. And overall, so everyone can stop living in this sobbing city that's pretty much slowly dying. Thank you.
Thank you. Next citizen to be heard.
Hello, council. Everybody, good night, or good evening. My name is Crystal Leepack, and I live on Poplar Street in here in Erie. I am the Youth Program Coordinator for Global Youth Service Day. Global Youth Service Day is a worldwide annual campaign that mobilizes millions of students, youth across the communities in over 135 countries. Erie with Youth Leadership Institute is the lead agency for Youth Service America. It's our fifth year that we are participating in Global Youth Service, and Global Youth Service gives a chance for our youth to voice their concerns within their communities. This is a youth-ran and a youth-led program, only of its kind. Some of the projects that we have and that we are going to implement in our own city of Erie, we are going to, like, we have five different topics. We have the environment, the elderly and veterans, hunger and homelessness, special needs, and children and youth. Now, you've heard from Azana and Abigail on a couple things with violence and hunger and what we plan on doing with tackling those two issues. One of the other projects we have for the veterans is we are collaborating with the Soldiers and Sailors Home to plant a meditation butterfly garden so that their clients can go out and enjoy the meditation and of flowers and hear, you know, the sounds of nature. And this will allow our children or our youth to interact with our veterans and become more connected with them and to realize the service that these men and women have done for our country. Another project we have is we are looking with the elderly at possibly doing an art therapy project. Art therapy has been proven to help with different diseases with the elderly, including dementia. Another project, we are going to be going under the Children and Youth umbrella, we are going to OCY, and they have visitation rooms that when they have those supervised visits. These rooms aren't very family-friendly, and so we are going to go ahead and spruce them up for them. Their toys are torn and tattered. We're going to try to give them some new toys and new books and coloring, and this is all going to be implemented by our youth. We are going to have many projects simultaneously and going on at the same time in this city on April 16th of this year, and we will mobilize 500 to 800 to 1,000, we are hoping, youth throughout our city of Erie. These youth come from schools, from church groups, from different youth organizations, and they are your future. They are the ones that want to make a difference, and they feel that their voices aren't heard enough because they are of a younger age, and they aren't the ones that can call somebody like Anandalkhan. They don't get the privilege of voting in officials, but they are learning what the process entails, and they are learning how to write letters to their legislators and how to write letters to business owners to get them involved in community and service learning. So in our service learning, they come away with a lesson. It's just not a community service where they're just going to go clean someone's bathroom. They're taking away a lesson and an opportunity to give back to their community. And with that becomes a connection, and with that connection, it gives them a sense of purpose. Now they have a sense of purpose, they're more likely to continue with their education. They're more likely to graduate, and they're more likely to go on to a secondary, higher level. And they're less likely to engage in these risky teen behaviors that we have been seeing. They're more likely to graduate, and they're more likely to go on to a secondary, higher level. And they're less likely to engage in these risky teen behaviors that we have been seeing on the news. They are very concerned, and they have a voice, and it's going to be heard on April 16th. Thank you very much.
It's nice to see these kids here, and it's your job to give them a reason to stay here. We need some jobs, and you all did a great job. Richard Wagner, 42nd State. Government isn't working for those that are paying for it. You as elected officials have a tremendous responsibility. You have to wear so many hats. There is a legislative responsibility you have, a financial responsibility you have, and probably the third most important responsibility is to make sure that every dime we spend is done so in a fiscally responsible manner. I'm concerned about the third responsibility that you have. Let me just explain a few things that have gotten my attention recently, and please don't ignore these concerns and write it off as simply those are autonomous authorities, nonprofits, that all work out, all outside of our authority. That's not true. I spoke to you a few months ago about the Junior's Last Laugh Building and the replacement of 47 windows on the third and fourth floor of the building. I was concerned about the cost. Well, now that the job is completed, I'm even more concerned. We spent a half a million dollars to replace 47 windows. That's over $10,000 a window. They are double hung. That's what you find in any home. They are caulked into the weather and unfinished on the interior. $10,000 a window. Second concern, and first, let me say that I am proud of every serviceman that ever served this great country of ours. But again, where is your oversight? We built 30 housing units for our disabled vets. I recently saw interior pictures of a unit. They are designed to accommodate a disabled person, 36-inch stores, sinks and vanities where you can pull a wheelchair up tight to the countertop, curbless showers, well-designed to make life easier for a disabled vet. My only complaint is that they came in with a price tag of $9 million. That is $9 million for 30 units. Council, that's $300,000 a unit. My only regret is that perhaps we could have built adequate accommodating housing units for half that amount and provided housing for 60 of our heroes instead of just 30. You have to start asking some tough questions. The last time I was here, I spoke about Develop Erie and the sale of 12th and Green Garden for $375,000. That was the bargain of the century. The Lord Corporation facility makes aerospace parts, not boat anchors. The facility at 12th and Green Garden had become too small for Lord Corporation, and I am glad that they were able to use a bush property and expand and stay in Erie County. The problem I see is that a desperate organization for money jumped at the first person who offered any money for that manufacturing site. 14 and a half acres was sold for $375,000. By, by the way, that corner is one of four that I consider highly developed. A desperate organization needed money, sold Erie down the drain. If you don't wanna believe me, let's compare it to 450 West A Street, the old Bradley Market. Family Dollar is buying that for a price tag of $335,000, only $45,000 less. It's located in an underperforming neighborhood and sits on .625 acres instead of 14 and a half. So what happened in these two transactions? A private individual, individual got market value for his property at 8th and Walnut, and Develop Erie gave the store away, probably to meet payroll for the month, and got literally nothing for 14 and a half acres of a manufacturing site. That's not good. For your information, Gannon just took over the other Verizon building at 9th and Sass, off, took it off the tax rolls. I like Gannon. I'm glad they're here. But like all the nonprofits and authorities, I feel they should be paying property taxes to help support the city that they settled in. Also, one of the realty transfers were 1705 Cherry, 548, 546, 550, 560 West 18th. Those were all recently sold to Luther Square. Those five properties, along with the other properties that Luther Square just purchased, will be coming off the tax rolls also. We have to stop the bleeding. It is impossible for any government to operate and provide the services that make us a city without everyone paying their fair share. I don't care what good they do for the community, what in-kind services they provide. They have to start balancing the city's checkbook. And thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Good evening, Councilman.
Good evening.
I'm McDonald. My property is 19th and Reed. I got some issues. I don't know. Some of y'all must be crazy. Here, you wanna put a halfway house up there on 11th and Harlem by that school? I want you to tell me, what good is a halfway house gonna do those kids up there? Those kids are enough problem by themselves. Why do you want a halfway house up there? Do you know what a halfway house is for? Do you know what they use them for? People's coming out of jail, all kinds of people. Would you want them around your kids? Would you want something like that around your kids? I want you to think about it. Are your kids better than everybody else's kids? I'm telling you, I don't, I, I wouldn't even want you to consider that. I wanna know what you're gonna do about it. I think you should re, the zoning board should re, go through this. That was a bad move. That was a wrong move. The zoning board need to be replaced if that's the kinda mindset they got. We don't need nothing like that around our kids. It's, it's disappointing that anybody in their right mind would want those peoples up there around those kids. I don't know. I don't know. Maybe I was born at the wrong time, or my mind ain't quite set up to handle this. Y'all think about it. I'm seeing, uh, in your agenda here, you want some money to do something in that park over there. Didn't you float a $30 million bond or something? This is not the first time I seen something in this agenda about giving that park some more money. What's going on? I, I thought that was a one-time thing. You done, you done voted this money in, now you're adding more money to it. That don't make sense to me. Ah, me and Matt don't get along too good, but I sure can see this. Y'all better get your heads together. You were voted in. I don't see nothing you did for the citizens, but you, you go to bat for Joe. That's your mayor. The citizen voted you in. What did they vote you in for? They don't need to be screwed. They voted you in 'cause they thought you would take care of business. You're a poor businessman. You better get your heads together. Some of you up there have, you wanna be the next mayor. I don't see mayor material up there. I hope we have a white horse coming in, because it will be business as usual. We don't use, we don't need business as usual. We need a change. We need a change. I hope y'all get your heads together, 'cause this town is going to the pits. Everybody, all these old folks, you keep raising their taxes, raise this, raise that. I, I, you know what? If I was God, and you better be glad I'm not, I would handle you, you, you would, you'd think twice before you even consider doing what, you'll use your own head and you'll ask him, is this right, is that right? Which you should, have town meeting, town hall meeting, asking the peoples what they want, 'cause we are the ones that's paying the bill. You're taxing us to death. You're taxing us to death. Uh, when, when that school board thing come out, when they quit playing with it down in Harrisburg, there would be people losing their homes, but y'all don't care. All y'all care about is them making those foreigners satisfied when they come in here. You got to start with the foundation. You wonder why we, we have such bad kids? You're no inspiration to them.
Thank you for your-
I thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street. A few items to cover kinda quickly. One is, we were wondering the status of the resolution about having Trans System finish the study on the viaduct for bikes and pedestrians. I think that's been at the solicitor's office for over a month now, and if there is a legal opinion coming out on it, we hope that it's transparent and written so we can evaluate it. The second item, and the rest of it here on out's good news. One is that there, we do have a group evolving out of the McBride Viaduct Group that is getting a great board together, not to sound like Trump, but we're getting a wonderful board of a cross-section of the east side that our purpose is to educate and elevate awareness on the ways cities work beyond the vehicle traffic flows, bikes, pedestrians, mass transit, and I won't say the name yet, 'cause we're waiting for the official vote on it, but to mark your calendars, April 28th, that's the same day that the Preservation Erie Awards Dinner is at, we have a lunch and a panel with Tony Griffin at Shiloh Baptist, and we've got up to 200 seats for that lunch, and it's gonna be a free lunch, and we want the shakers and doers in Erie to be there listening to Tony Griffin and the panel talk about how to address the problems on the east side of Erie. And I have to tell you, I've never seen such a great list of lecturers in this town than what I've seen the last few years, between the Jefferson, between us, between Preservation Erie. Erie is getting the top talent in the nation coming here to talk. So let's not squander these opportunities, and April 28th will be a fantastic discussion, I guarantee it. Our group continues to work openly with PennDOT on the whole East Bay Connector area. We still have our disagreements about specifically the McBride Viaduct, but I hope you all join me in a, in a prayer later tonight. We have the team up at Harvard University with Dulkemper and Sinnett and Green and Rosdick and Henry, and I forget who the sixth person is, but they're there for three days learning about what causes blight and how to solve it, and it's not only about what looks best at the bottom line of the checkbook. There's a lot of decisions that are made that don't affect the checkbook, that make a difference on blight, and I'm praying, I think half the team already knows the answers, but the other half needs to listen and come away with tools in their toolbox. So I'm hoping that happens. And other than that, I'm thinking that, Dave, I know some things are happening on the east side opportunity corridor. I've had a couple meetings on that subject today, and I'd like to catch up with you on some of the latest, 'cause I know some things are adjusting on that point.
Mr. Trump, we have to address council as a whole. We're not addressing individual council members. That's what our-
Okay, okay.
Thank you. You can have that offline, that conversation.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Mr. President. And besides that, there's a lot of people continuing to work to make Erie better, and actually, I know a council member was at the Erie Next Meeting the other night, and a lot of people talked about, we have to stop saying no, and we've got to be aspirational in this town, and there's enough smart people in this town to make it happen. So I think we've got nowhere to go but up, and I hope that we have the support of the council all along the way, and let's keep making Erie a better place. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting.
Ordinance says for final passage, Council File 15945, Official Ordinance Number 7, 2016, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $169,468.56 in the City of Erie Sewer Fund from unanticipated and unappropriated fund balance. By Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mr. Mersky, the Council File Ordinance Bill-
Ms. Rose, if you could hold on for one second. I just wanna recognize, before you guys all leave, the Youth Leadership Institute of Erie is here, and children, I just wanted, teenagers, you're not children, but I just wanted to thank you guys for coming here, and I wanted, on behalf of council, to applaud you for going above and beyond your schoolwork and your studies to take on something extra for leadership. And I'd like to thank your leader, you know, Mr. Nicholson, and Crystal, thank you guys so much for spearheading this, and we, as a council, are so delighted to see young people like you stepping up in the community and not waiting your turn to lead, but leading as young people. So on behalf of council, we'd like to thank you before you leave. If you wanna give them a round of applause and- Thank you. Thank you. Rose, I, I apologize for that, but I did wanna recognize them before they left. Thank you guys so much for being here, and we do have your dates for Global Youth Service, and thank you for the packet. We'll take, uh, take a look at that. Thank you. Sorry, Rose.
That's okay. By Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mr. Mersky, that filed Ordinance Bill Number 1595 and 45, and now known as Official File Ordinance 7, 2016, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 7, 2016, finally by a 7, nay, zero. Council File Number 1915946, Official Ordinance Number 8, 2016, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $150,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the PA Department of Community and Economic Development for the Perry Square Project. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15946, now known as Official File Ordinance Number 8 of 2016, be finally passed by the City Council.
Rose, before we go on, there was a question from a, or a comment, rather, from one of the citizens to be heard. I did want to express to the community that this isn't money from a loan or a bond issue. This is money from the PA Department of Community and Economic Development that was left over from last year's funding. They came to the city and said, we have $150,000, can you use it? We've been working on the Perry Square Project for quite some time now, and it's, as we get money, that's what we spend as, in phases. So when we got the money, we said, we have a project for it, the Perry Square Project, we're paying for it in phases, and that's where this money's, that's where it came from, and that's where it's going.
Mr. President?
Yes.
In addition to that, I think it's important for people to understand that when we get these types of pots of money, they're relegated to certain things and projects. It's not just, hey, do you have something you can use this for? And then we, you know, do something in Perry Square and I do something for our kids or the broader community. I mean, those things, those funds are relegated to these types of projects, and I think that's a very important note to have and to add on to what you commented on.
Excellent point, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Any other council members? Rose?
By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Bill Number 15946, and now known as Official File Ordinance 8 of 2016, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 8, 2016, by a 7, nay, zero. Council File Number 159- Council File Number 15947, Official Ordinance Number 9, 2016, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $58,980 from Home Program Income Received for the Following, for the Home M-14 Projects. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15947, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 9, 2016, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 9, 2016, by a 7, nay 0.
Please, we didn't sign off there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes.
Ordinance is for first reading. Council File Number 15948, An Ordinance in accordance with the 2016 City of Erie Budget, the sum of $951,000 is appropriated and unappropriated anticipated revenue for the reallocation thereof in the Depth Service Fund. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the Council File Ordinance Number 15948, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City Council, Renon, Adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15948, by a 7, nay 0, on first That'll take us to new business, Mr. President. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Mersky, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, the Erie City Council supports the bipartisan State Basic Education Funding Commission, BEFC, in their efforts to fairly distribute dollars to public schools across the state using the Fair Funding Formula designed to address the concerns of Pennsylvania public schools, whether urban or rural, large or small, experienced changing student populations are holding steady regardless of which county public schools students reside. This balance formula would direct money to the school districts based on objective factors such as student enrollment, the needs of student population, and school district wealth and capacity to raise local revenues. The BEFC unanimously approved recommendations for the Fair Funding Formula so that school districts can effectively budget from year to year, able to predict PA state allocations.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jones?
Uh, we, as a council, I think collectively have, uh, share the concern with the city, I mean, the school district of the City of Erie and as well as the school board, um, around how do we get the proper funding for our students? Uh, not just in the city proper, but in all the public school systems in Pennsylvania, but in particular of the City of Erie with all of the many, uh, varieties of challenges and struggles that the students who participate in, through their, uh, through the Erie School District to learn and to gain their education. Uh, so what we're sending and what we're talking about is we're just asking for, uh, things to be done and dispersed evenly and appropriately. When I say evenly, I should maybe more accurately say appropriately and fairly, um, because there are certain school districts that have much more need, uh, for a variety of reasons than others. And so I think the state recognized that, and, uh, the state has also come up with a fair funding formula that has several dynamics involved in that formula that take into consideration some of the intangibles and some, uh, variety of, you know, rural versus urban and all those kind, those connotations, uh, concerning different public school districts. The sad and maybe disappointing part is that although this fair funding formula is in place, uh, it's not being utilized. So the city in particular, and I'll speak, because we're a city council, and I'll speak specifically in relation to the Erie School District, with all of the needs and all of the challenges that we are experiencing in our district, in our community, we are one of the least and most inappropriately funded school districts of our size throughout the state. That's unacceptable. Um, I think this, this body agrees with that statement. I think, of course, the school district and the school district, uh, Board of Directors agrees with that statement, and I'd bet if you polled the citizens of the City of Erie, they would agree with that statement. And so this would, this letter of support, we're asking for, um, for just, actually for the state to agree to do what they said they think is a really good idea, and that will help to be able to secure, um, uh, a more appropriate fund, uh, excuse me, amount of funds being released to our school district to maintain facilities, to pay teachers, to provide the programming and the educational opportunities that our students deserve, uh, in a public school system in the City of Erie and abroad, but again, focused on our city proper. And so I support this, appreciate, Mr. President, for, um, being cooperative and helpful and helping to pull this all together, and appreciate the support of my peers on council to, to, um, to move this ordinance forward, excuse me, this resolution forward.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else like to speak to?
Yes, Mr. President?
Mr. Kwiatowski?
As a former school director, I'm glad we're taking a stand because I saw firsthand, as well as you did, me and a teacher, the inequities of the school systems across this Commonwealth. And Erie's always done a great job, but when you're told what to do from Harrisburg and you're given no, no funds to back it up, and the levies are now put upon the taxpaying public, it's a little unfair. I mean, I remember talking with some elderly people once that, uh, and you used to hear it all the time, but "I have no kids in the school system, so why am I paying taxes?" And once a couple of wise people told me, "Well, think about it this way, how did we get where we were because somebody paid while we were at that level?" And I think the Commonwealth has to finally realize that if we're gonna, you know, walk to walk and talk to talk, then we have to do what's right for our most important asset, and that asset in the community is our kids, our children that are going to be the leaders someday. And with all the influx of people from foreign countries, people under different levels of poverty, there are many challenges for our teachers, our educators, it's students themselves. And it only makes sense, as Councilman Jones said, and many others before him even, that the state start addressing that issue in a manner that's commensurate with the needs of the community, where those communities that can afford it don't need the help, should not begin the same level that those that truly need the help and are making the effort to, uh, solve those problems, they should be helped. So I'm glad to support this, and, uh, thank you, Councilman Jones, for bringing us up.
Mr. President, just real quick, too, I just wanted to add real, really, really, really fast.
Yeah.
Um, this is, um, an effort to show that the city's, um, legislative bodies are working together as well, like we're on the same page about this. Often, you know, we have the school board, county council, city council, we're all kind of three different legislative groups plopping all over the place doing our thing separately in silos, but this is something that we can all agree on, our kids being educated, our students, our young people being educated appropriately, properly, and the state doing what it said it's going to do, uh, in that effort and, and doing it, um, in providing for the most, uh, again, significant resource we have, which is our young people. So I just wanted to say that that was a collaborative, and this is us standing together. Thank you.
I just wanted to, um, just add a few things. First off, Mr. Jones, I want to thank you for your leadership on this and spearheading this effort, um, it's commendable, and, um, you're absolutely right. If we don't stand up for our children, then what are we doing here? I mean, they're the least among us. And when you look at the numbers, almost, you're, the City of Erie School District is underfunded almost $2,000 per child compared to other districts. That equates to about $40 million more a year if the state would apply this fair funding formula for the Erie School District. That $40 million is made up on the backs of our local taxpayers, because as the school district doesn't have the money from the state, it relies on homeowners and their property taxes to make up the difference. Or it does, you can either do one thing, raise revenue, which is through property taxes, or make cuts. So then programs are cut, after-school programs are cut, sports are cut, sports are combined with other schools, um, we defer maintenance on buildings, books are cut, and, um, at the end of the day, the kids are the ones who suffer. So, Mr. Jones, I just, again, thank you for spearheading this effort, and, um, again, bipartisan, this was a group of Republican and Democratic, House of Representatives and Senators from the State Senate and the State House that came up with this formula, bipartisan. And we know how hard it is for them to agree down there. They agreed on this, and now they won't bring it to a vote. They don't, they won't bring it to a vote. So we're urging them, our city, our children are desperate for this money, and our school district is desperate for this money, and we're, we're, the resolution is to encourage them to, um, it's our support for the fair funding formula, a bipartisan, uh, agreement, and that's what we're pushing for today. So thank you, Mr. Jones, for that.
All right, roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. By Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mrs. Arrington, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that Marilyn Poe is hereby appointed Deputy City Clerk for the City Council of the City of Erie. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jones?
I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
All right, we, it's been moved and sep, uh, seconded, any separations? Any separations?
Uh, for vote, uh, purposes of voting, I'd like to separate number six under contracts.
Any other separations?
Seeing none?
Do you want to separate the change order out?
No, under contracts.
Oh, I see, okay, I'm sorry, I have to renumber mine. Okay. That's number 13 to me. Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. Okay, by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the contract for the 2016 curb ramps, one project, bid number 1722-16, be and the same be awarded to Crenshaw Brothers Construction of 1854 East 26th Street Erie in the amount of $158,693.70, and that the proper city officials be, and they are hereby authorized and directed to sign said contract on behalf of the City of Erie. Scotty?
Yes, uh, reason why I want to bring this up to a vote, I think there's a great disconnect between, uh, our writing of contracts and those, writing those contracts and the information that's being given to council. Uh, it was the intent of council that, uh, certain conditions would be met, and, uh, I don't think, uh, we were told, uh, with, uh, we were given the right answers. At this time, I'm not prepared to award the contract. Uh, I might have been had I got some information from upstairs, but since it's not here, uh, I am not prepared to award a contract to anyone who owes taxes or anything to the City of Erie without an explanation or any fees.
Okay, any other council people wanting to speak?
Mr. President?
Mr. Witherspoon?
I'm in somewhat agreement with, uh, Councilman Kwiatowski. However, in this particular case, if the contract is not awarded, we are punishing the person who, we are punishing Crenshaw Construction. We understood that we had a process, uh, to follow, uh, here in administration, and a certain wording was not placed on the contract, nor was the Crenshaw Construction aware of it. And if we do not, for any other reason, if we do not, uh, approve this contract, then we're doing injustice to this individual. I think we need to get our ducks in order from this point forward, and make sure all the legal documentations are given to every individual who is awarded a contract, to make sure that certain bills, uh, fees are paid and up to date. If we do not award the contract, now, it may not go through for whatever reasons, but if we don't vote on it one way or another tonight, we are doing injustice to a contractor that is not aware of the policies that council had set, and somewhere it fell through the cracks, and we should not, uh, punish the contractor. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kwiatowski?
Uh, I don't want to re, I, I agree wholeheartedly, Mr. Witherspoon. However, I get tired, week after week, and this is not the first time it's happened. We had a very controversial, uh, contract a few months ago, which we kept hearing, you know, people pointing back and forth about whose fault it was. I don't know how to get the message upstairs to the administration, I'm not picking anybody, but if, if, I don't know how to get the message across to them that there is procedures, and without procedures, I, I don't know why I even come to meetings. You know, if we're not going to follow the rules, and I, and I, I feel bad, but if you want to table this, I'd be willing to table it for, till our next meeting to find the truth in this matter, but I don't know how else to get into the, into the heads of the people doing these things that it's, it can't be tolerated any longer. I mean, uh, we have rules for rules' sake, and if we're not going to obey them, I don't know how to get the message across. I'm not going to keep, uh, voting on contracts and giving them out when they're wrong, okay? I mean, if you want to table it, I'll be, I'll be glad to table it and, uh, and, you know, look at this issue and come back and readdress it next meeting.
Mr. President?
Mr. Witherspoon?
It seems like, uh, Councilman Kwiatowski and I, uh, we're, we're.
Agree.
We're, it's the first time we agree and not disagree. But, uh, I guess he and I understand what we're saying, but what I'm saying, if we table it, then we're saying to the contractor that you were aware, which he wasn't aware. Uh, so, uh, I'm not voting, I'll vote no, not to table it, and, uh, and one of my predecessors, we voted up or voted down.
Mr. Witherspoon, I just, I, just for the clarification, if we vote to table it, it's, it's not telling them no, it's saying that we'll vote on it.
Delaying.
We're delaying it till the next time, so it's not, it's not punishing him because, uh, given Erie's weather and the forecast for next week, there's no way he's going to pour concrete next week anyway, so, um, it's supposed to snow. So I don't think that it's, um, a punishment. I really, I, I just disagree with the language, it's not a punishment to, to table it at this point. Mr. Winarski?
Following up with President Mersky, what he had to say, I think it, a two-week hold off on this, if we table this, we can get all our facts in order. I think at this point, we don't have the fine lines of what was presented as for the contract, what the slang was, um, and I think everyone here would like to know, as well as we can address it for this particular contract, as well as other contracts in the future. So personally, I have no problem with tabling it tonight, and we'll have more information come our next meeting and move forward with it then.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jones?
Any other, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I, um, there's a bigger issue, right? Some small thing always brings up bigger issues, and I guess that's the nature of sometimes what we do and, and a lot of things that happen in the world. But, this, again, speaks to, as was mentioned before, process issues, and process, uh, or inconsistencies in processes in this building. Um, I think everyone in this building does an amazing job with what they do, think they do extremely well, I think every department maximizes with the minimal amount that they have to do and operate, but they don't do it together very often. And then it comes to us, you know, and then we start asking questions, and then when we start asking questions, we can't really get answers right away, and, uh, it's, it's just, it happens too, too often, in my opinion. It happens too often, and I think people have, you know, we have to figure, I'm not sure how to, how to deal with it. I don't know if we can via ordinance, I don't think we can via ordinance manage departments in that sense, but we have to have a system. This is, again, the second time of, uh, contracts come down, um, I think it's significant contract, you know what I mean, for that company, as well as the work that needs to be done, uh, with the curb cuts, and, uh, we end up on confusion, table, it just, it makes us look bad. If I can keep it really honest and be really, like, almost, well, blunt, it makes us look ridiculous sometimes. There's stuff, things come to us, and when we ask a question, we can't get an answer, and then we're up here, blab, 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 blab around stuff, and we've got to wait till Monday or next week or something to get information we should be able to get and should be actually afforded to us upfront. If the system is busted, then we need to fix it. If this particular contract somehow slipped through the cracks, we'll chalk it up to the game and figure out, okay, how do we fix it? Is there a way of dealing with it? But it's, things come to us that have been approved at a higher level or a different level, and then we ask questions, and we can't even, we can't get anywhere with it. And we try to hold the integrity of what we want to push through, to say if someone has some obligation to the city, and I'm not saying this person does or doesn't have a justifiable reason or whatever that process is, I'm saying, well, we put things in place, and they're not followed, and then when they come back to us, they're not followed through with what we asked to be followed through, and then it puts us in a position where, do we mean what we say? And this stuff comes to us, we're last on the list, and, and it's frustrating, because we're talking about something that we shouldn't have to talk about in the middle of this meeting, and I'm talking too much about it myself, so I'm going to stop. But, I would move, I'd make a motion, if I could, to table, um, because I don't feel that the table would hurt in the overarching, uh, scheme of things, and I think the integrity of this council would be held up better, uh, because our intention is for, if there are obligations, we say no. And so, if we vote according to what our previously stated intentions are, this will not pass. And so, for me, I would be, I would be more comfortable tabling it, getting the right answer, um, having the conversation that needs to be had, and then moving forward.
I'll second it, Mr. Jones.
Do we have a motion and a second to table?
I'd get your stuff, Tom. It's rounding me out, right, man.
Motion to table, resolution number thirteen by Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Winarsky. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
Ms. Mersky. Okay, this resolution will adopt, uh, yea six, nays one. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Committee reports. Mrs. Arrington.
I don't have a report at this time, Mr. President, but I, I would like to give hats off to the Police Department for, um, their diligent work of getting these young men off the streets who have committed murders and have been running around here. They have done a fantastic job, and a lot of people need to understand, you know, people get upset, because when somebody tell the police, well, such and such shot and killed such and such, they think the police can just go out and get them, and they can't. They have to collect the evidence, they have to do their job to make these charges stick, and then also, we need the citizens who are the witnesses to step up and go to trial and testify and, and put these young men where they need to be. My heart goes out to the families, to the mothers of these young men, because you all know, I know, how they feel, but one thing everybody need to understand is, there is never closure when you lose a loved one the way I have lost my son and so many other people have lost their children. We can move forward in a positive way, that's what I try to do, you know, make something positive, come out of something negative, but the Erie Police Department has done a phenomenal job, and I just want to give hats off to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Mr. Jones.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'll just follow right in line with, um, what Mrs. Arrington, uh, commented on, you know, when, when the police don't do well, we hear about it all the time, right? It makes video, it makes low, local, national, global news, uh, but when they do do their jobs well, we often disallow to go into the quiet night of, that's what they're supposed to do. Um, but even just yesterday, there was some significant, um, collaboration and police work with multiple law enforcement agencies in our community, in our area, that took another person who was wanted for murder off of our streets. And so, um, I think it's important that we recognize, we all want to be recognized, but especially when you do something well. I'll take the criticism, just give me the love, too, at the end of the day. Um, and so, I think that it's important that we do celebrate them, and I think it was really powerful that the mothers, two of the mothers who lost sons in this last couple of years, and just last year, um, had a protest lined up for Saturday, just past Saturday, saying, where is the justice? What are you going to do? We want justice, we want, we want, and then the day before, uh, what they were asking for, at least the first phase of what they're asking for, came into fruition, and, and some young men were, uh, you know, taken from our community and, and hopefully making our community a safer place. But they, they didn't just cancel it, they still met, they brought the proverbial donuts and coffee to the police officers, the stereotypical gift, I guess, for a police officer, but they came and still walked and said, thank you, Erie Police Department, and we don't see that side of it very often. That didn't make, uh, you know, national news, the Police Department being celebrated for doing something and, and families having resolution. So, we, you know, again, hats off to the Police Department and all the work and the due diligence. With that said, the Sisters of Mercy and the sisters that were here representing today remind us that for every, uh, situation, there are multiple sides. And so, as we took young men off the street who made some really bad choices, bad decisions, they have families, too, that had nothing to do with that, and they're still losing their children. And so, I mean, every coin has two sides for it to be legitimate, and so, I think those prayers and support need to go to all of these families that are touched, because nobody wins. So, we arrest guys, uh, and get them off the street, but that doesn't bring the boys back. You understand? And so, I think it's important that we recognize that we're all hurting, we recognize that this community has been traumatized over the last several years in a lot of significant ways, but there are also a lot of good people who are doing, uh, the right things to try to make it better, and law enforcement and, and social agencies and bodies like this one that are doing our parts and in our lane to make our community a better and a healthy place. Uh, so, I think that, that's, I just wanted to kind of share that, uh, as well. Also, in relation to Unified Erie, we, there was a lot of, uh, conversation and, and dialogue around some efforts of this group to, to deal with, uh, issues like what we're talking about as, as far as crime and youth at risk and young people at risk, uh, on, and a major part of that program and strategy was to provide, uh, the community, providing programs, resources, mentor, as well as case managers and caseworkers for young people and adults who are entering and re-entering into the community after being incarcerated or that have been in a lifestyle of craziness but want to change it, and, and often don't know where to go. A major part of that is having groups from the community, um, providing those services and, and those individuals knowing who those groups are. So, um, on March twenty-second, just want to give a quick announcement, uh, March twenty-second at the, uh, Blasco Library, uh, from ten-thirty to twelve, any service provider, service organization, or individual who wants to be a part of the help's side of, uh, the Unified Erie effort to, to bring resolution and peace and, and, uh, provide something for our young people and adults who are at risk of violent and offensive crime, like, uh, such as what we've been discussing, um, you can come to that meeting, find out a little bit more what it's about, and then you can get, uh, some direction on how you can help. So, if it's an individual, an organization, an agency that provides service, or a person who just wants to be a part of the process of healing and moving forward, come to that meeting at the Blasco Library, March twenty-second, ten-thirty to noon. I think you can find it on the United, uh, Unified Erie website, United Way website, you can find more information, or leave a message for me in the office, and I can reach out, back out to you to get you more information. Again, that's how we can do something to get involved in the process. Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, no other report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Winarsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very brief, no committee reports this evening, uh, just want to follow up again with the youth that, uh, came out this evening, tonight at this council meeting. It's great to see that so many of them that did come out, their involvement, they came to the mic with ideas, with possible solutions. I mean, it's, it's great to see there's something out there that's getting their involved and that they're interested in helping at that young age. I wrote down a little note, them getting involved is almost priceless, but, uh, it, it's, it's awesome, uh, but I also want to thank their parents for letting them get involved, because, uh, you definitely need that supervision and the parents to help them and to guide them to get involved, and by them coming out tonight, it's a great opportunity for them as well as for us to hear from our youth, and, uh, I'm sure everyone here on council, they're more than welcome to come back anytime with any thoughts or call any one of us if they have any ideas or anything going on, but other than that, that's all I had for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Witherspoon.
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I attended the Park Authority meeting, there's a couple items I wanted to report there. Um, there is, um, there's a study being done, a structural study being done in the McAllister Marine Building, they're trying to determine kind of the next steps with that, with that project and how to move forward, not that project, but that, that, that structure, that building. There's been several proposals in the past to, uh, possibly renovate or do something with that on the waterfront there, the east landing there. And also, the Liberty Park Band Show, I, I know there were, I think there were bids received, but there hasn't been any finalization in that, or at least at the meeting I was at, there wasn't a finalization, but they received bids for the band show, and I think they're reviewing those. Um, I also attended the Erie Neighborhood Watch Advisory Committee meeting. At the meeting, um, as we've been doing, the communities continue to discuss the best ways that, uh, the different neighborhood organizations can work together. Uh, we also discussed the possibility of a possible neighborhood summit meeting, where we'd bring together all the groups and kind of talk about, uh, the missions and talk about some best practices, so, again, it's just enough more communication with neighborhood groups. Um, also wanted to just report the Erie Comp Plan, uh, draft is being reviewed right now by various committee members, and future public meetings will take place, uh, there's no date, uh, announced yet for that, and then following the hearing and input, then there will be, uh, it'll come to council for a vote. Um, and the last item is ahead, is I just wanted to, um, thank the, um, all the youth that were here today for the Youth Leadership Institute of Erie. It was really inspiring to hear them come today and, uh, talk about, uh, some of their concerns and just hear from them, and, and really just see them at, uh, see them at the, uh, this meeting and see that they're partaking in our, in our government and trying to learn more as we learn more about what their, what their needs are. Uh, and that's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kwiatowski.
Yes, uh, I attended the Park Authority meeting, also the Blighted Property Review Committee meeting, that's always an eye-opener, uh, they're doing a good job, uh, more houses are going on the, uh, list. Uh, we also attended the Southeast Erie Neighborhood Watch meeting. I want to thank Dave Dieter from the NRO for being there, some of our police officers, and, uh, the college itself, Mercy, so it seems to be, the problem is being addressed a little better now, but, uh, we still got to be vigilant. Uh, and finally, I'd like to also, as police lays on, thank the Erie Police Department for, I think, uh, some marvelous work, not only, not only this past week, but pretty much, we've been hearing some good stories the last few years. It's a lot of hard work, and I agree, my heart goes out to Mrs. Arrington when, uh, I, I think she shares my opinion, and I hope there's a day when we don't have a group of mothers that are grieving from crime, that the group can dissolve, but, you know, that's a long project down the road, but it takes a lot of cooperation. I remember a gentleman, Mr. Thompson, not Alex, but he said, you know, if you want to take back your community, your neighborhood, it's one slow step at a time, and people have to get involved. I remember when I was a young man, and my dad was a detective, and I said, how come we can't solve these crimes? You know, you watch TV and you, they, they solve it in an hour. Well, it doesn't work that way. It's a long, laborious process, things don't happen just like you see. But, at the bottom of it all, I learned a, a very valuable lesson from them, that it wasn't so much the evidence they gathered as it was the people and the tips. When the neighborhood became involved and, uh, they were given leads, you know, things happened, and that's why I think, people have to be, if they really want their, their city back, their, their neighborhoods, uh, they can't be afraid, I know it's, it's tough, it's tough for me to say that, but, you know, people have to step up to the plate and help their police department. I think when you see that, you get the results you did this past week, and nobody could be happier than, you know, I, I hate seeing a crime, I hate seeing people incarcerated to the extent we're doing it, but, uh, I think people have to be told that that's not going to be tolerated anymore, and we don't want to see any more mothers losing their sons. And, uh, I want to thank Chief Randy Bowers, uh, I want to thank Captain Frank Kwiatowski of the detectives, and I especially want to thank Detective Greg Baney and Detective Rick Laura for some fine work, and I know those gentlemen, and I do know they put a lot of hours in, because I was in contact with them on other issues, and they were very busy. And I'd like to thank the whole police department, and last week, I mean, two, a meeting ago, we couldn't thank the new officers that came on board, uh, we ended the meeting a little quick, but I wish those gentlemen good luck, and, uh, it's a tough job, and, uh, I think a lot has expected them, but, uh, I'm proud to say they did a good job, but we, as a community, we have to support them also. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few things to report. I wanted to acknowledge the other young people in the crowd. Where, where are you guys from?
Edinburgh University.
Edinburgh University, are you here for a class, or? And what class is that?
Well, it's science degree fifteen, state local.
Nice. Oh, it's a, what, three-hundred level?
Yeah.
Oh, you guys are political junkies, look out. All right. Well, we appreciate you being here today, and, uh, you know, one of the great things about government at the local level is it's the most direct, um, contact with the people. Uh, you know, once you get federal and, and down to Harrisburg, there's a little bit of disconnect. Um, we're pretty much all in the phone book, or all on the internet and with an email away, so, uh, it's one of the most rewarding jobs i- in government that, that you can have as an elected official, because you make the biggest impact right in your local community. Thank you guys for being here today, we appreciate it. Uh, just a few things to report, I attended the Father-Son Jobs Luncheon hosted by Victory Christian Center and Bishop Brock. It was a record crowd this year, and, um, they had agencies from the state, from Career Link, uh, the unions, and, uh, they talked about, uh, job training, they talked about how to, um, go about applying for jobs, and they had many good speakers and, and a great luncheon there, and we, we thank Bishop Brock for putting that on. Uh, I also attended the opening of the reopening, rather, of the Greyhound Bus Station. Mr. Jeff Baker has an amazing story, uh, of really turning his life around, uh, it's public, he, he made his story public, and we're so grateful for, um, his efforts to become, come from addiction to being the newest minority business owner in Erie. And, uh, it was a long struggle, and he had much help along the way, and I'd like to thank the city mission for helping him with that, but, um, what a success story, um, both on a personal level and on a professional level for him, and, uh, we wish him well as the new owner of the local Greyhound Bus Station. Uh, we had a study session as council for the Community Development Block Grant, and there will be a public hearing for that on the twenty-second at ten AM. And I attended the Erie Next, uh, meeting, uh, the Blasco Library. There were great ideas from the community, uh, it was over a hundred people attended, and, uh, a lot of good ideas generated from that meeting, and we also had, I met with, um, and just to, not to beat a dead horse, but thank Mr. Jones for his work with this resolution on the, um, Basic Education Funding Commission. I did meet with Dr. Adams and Bo, uh, Bob Casillo. He, uh, both of them are very, very concerned about the future of our Erie School District. Uh, without this basic education increase in this fair funding formula, the district's looking at bankruptcy in the next five years, and that's not good for any of us in this community, both for our children... community, both for our children and for our future as a city. We wouldn't be the first community to do this, Chester Upland is already, Duquesne cities in bankruptcy, school districts in bankruptcy and what will happen is the state takes over and that's not a good thing. So they're trying everything they can to avoid that and I'm grateful to Mr. Jones for spearheading the cooperative effort there. We, I also attended today a special, or I met with the Governor's Special Assistant for local government, Mr. Mark Smith, and it was a productive meeting and I thank Julie Slomsky from the Governor's Office for setting that up. He basically asked what are our concerns in this community and I addressed those with him. And then after that, I visited the Y-Teen Center today and I wanted to thank Sean Beers and Marcus Atkinson for providing me with a tour. They provide excellent programming there, serving over 70 youth in our community. And finally, I just want to wish everyone a happy Easter, because we won't see you until after Easter, and I want to wish Mrs. Robey a happy birthday on Saturday. So from all of us on council, happy birthday. You won't want me singing. When I taught at Holy Family, Sister Kevin said, turn up the tape and lip sync because you're throwing the kids off with your flat. So I'm not going to sing, but happy birthday, Rose.
Happy birthday.
All right, and City Controller, Ms. Dan Kavitch.
The only thing is, I just want to keep council aware of that the state reports are required to be filed by the end of this month. We're working, my office is working on them and they'll be done by next week, we'll get them out to the mail and I will have copies for you at our next meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Beck, Administration.
Thank you so much, although I was unable to attend the Erie Next Meeting on Monday evening at the Hurt Auditorium at Blasco, thank you. I was able to attend the R. West Bay Front Neighborhood Meeting and they have a draft plan for the reorganization, actually of the organization that they're planning that goes from 12th Street North, from State Street over to Frontier Park. So it's a, it's a very large area that they're working to identify those neighborhoods, businesses, community leaders with, within the, that live in and work and play in that area. So they have big things coming, the next meeting is going to be on April 5th and that's going to be at the MLK Center within the area at 5:00 and the public is welcome to attend to, I believe, hear the unveiling of the, of the plan for that area. So that's all, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.
City Council adjourns at 9:11. Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
See you tomorrow.